For February 21st, 2023. This time we'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation led by Commissioner Tony Bear.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If we could please, if we could please start with a moment of silence to remember Leland Bull, who recently died. Leland was a longtime Republican supporter, previous candidate for Board of Commissioners. So we have a couple of thoughts, maybe each his family's, for this time. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus Christ, please be with us this evening as we conduct the county's business. Please help us make decisions that you would agree with. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear.
Present.
Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kennedy.
Present.
Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Polesky.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Shotwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to approve the agenda? Have a motion in support. Any additions? Allegiances? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition this evening. If you have any communications or petitions, please present them to the clerk at this time. Seeing nor hearing none. We have no special orders or public hearings this evening. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name. You have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. First opportunity for public comment. First opportunity for public comment?
Rosemary Tanner, 122 North Rand. Dear Commissioners, as you are well aware, when voters passed Proposition Two, they amended the state constitution to allow private money to fund our elections pending financial disclosure. Also contained in Prop Two, however, is the provision that county, cities, and townships may at their discretion reject these private monies. I am writing to inform you and to protect your constituents from an organization called U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence. This organization has the potential to corrupt and disrupt the election process in Jackson County by offering county, cities, townships unsolicited free money, seemingly without authorization from governing bodies. The main objective is to embed their ideology in local election offices. Offices will receive information that free money is given due to your election excellence. Make no mistake, this is a targeted operation focused on changing election outcomes. Who doesn't want free money? But many strings are attached. Contracts, staff to help with your elections. As we know, nothing is free. In return, they want access to private data freely at any time for an unlimited timeframe. This is the only tip of what is known about this organization. It appears to me that it is a pay-to-play and, once embedded in our election process, would be difficult, if not impossible, to remove. As a county constituent, I have grave concerns about this organization, and it could potentially be deemed as privately funded election bribery, which Jackson County should not be a participant. We are all well aware of the fusion of Zuckerbuck millions of dollars to influence the last election, and just last month, Ottawa County rejected $1.5 million of this tainted unsolicited money. It is incumbent on us all to root out the corruption that infected Michigan's voting process during the last election and preserve the state's election integrity. As a Jackson County resident, we voters deserve better to maintain the sanctity of our election process. We need to be assured that the corruption has been eliminated or even the presence or appearance of corruption is not allowed. We expect representation to ensure fair and honest elections from this point forward. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Melissa Hiller, Summit Township. I wanted to, whoops, I'm going to screech this. I wanted to open the conversation about Keisha Hamilton and ask that you recognize her tweets and public remarks as the hateful racist insults they are. I was there at the JPS School Board meeting last month and witnessed firsthand what felt like an Antifa attack, yelling and booing over calm, thought-provoking questions and rational points being made at the podium. This was an attempt to intimidate, distract, and shut down any words that disagreed with Keisha's "whiteness is so evil" rhetoric. Keisha was hailed by black, white, and teal-colored-haired audience members as brave and heroic. And for those of us who failed to look through the lens of bigotry, we were the ones that were deemed the racist. Somehow, in the midst of all that drama-filled Jerry Springer Show meets BLM, they considered themselves to be the victim of our hatred. I didn't even speak, but how dare I clap as a white woman who Keisha unapologetically claims are the stupidest. Just as a quick flashback for reference, Sheriff Rand was, without hesitation, denounced understandably by the whole town for the racist remarks that he made in the locker room a few years ago. Yet this educational influencer, who loudly and proudly lashes out against white people, calling us dangerous, was later invited to speak at Northwest Schools. Did her behavior earn her a promotion as a role model for this next generation? Are we now fighting discrimination with discrimination? I, for one, am sickened that our community is expected to endure such blatant racism. So am I to understand that just because our skin colors don't match, we are automatically enemies? I have never felt that way, but our future generations most certainly will if we don't put an end to this nonsense. I will be taking note of the leadership in Jackson, those who show their acceptance of this by remaining silent and those who choose to be a voice of strength by speaking out against it. If you truly care about the welfare of our community, then I'm sure you'll agree, this self-justified threat to our community is what's dangerous, not whiteness. Thank you for your time.
If I may just briefly, you can come on to the podium. Don't stand, push that mic up. If you're too close to it, all you got to do is face it. If you face it, I mean, this is a foot away, and you'll get great reception. If you get too close, it starts to get better and...
Good evening, Commissioners. Nancy Thorpe, thank you for giving me this time to speak. In the early part of 2018, the city of Jackson was enraged by a situation concerning Sheriff Rand. Sheriff Rand made racist comments and derogatory comments against women. The mayor at the time, Derek Dobie, was communicating with the governor to have Sheriff Rand removed from office. A recall was started, the city council spoke out against Sheriff Rand, the Board of Commissioners spoke out, and all of Jackson was incensed and all of Jackson took action denouncing Sheriff Rand's comments. Here we are in 2023. We'd like to think racism and divisiveness were no longer a problem. Once again, the racist derogatory comments against women, well, against white women and the white race have reared their ugly head. The comments made by Keisha Hamilton made our local news. They made the national news. They even made international news. Ms. Hamilton continues to make racist comments along with calls to dismantle all systems of whiteness and decolonize the education system which she is involved with. And according to her, is a system of whiteness. Keisha Hamilton is a trustee on the Jackson Public School Board of Education and sits on the city's racial equity committee. The actions taken condemning Sheriff Rand's comments were swift. The Jackson Board of Commissioners issued a unanimous resolution condemning his comments and asked for his resignation. I'm asking that the Board of Commissioners to react the same kind of resolve they did then and issue a statement condemning the racist comments of Ms. Hamilton and demand her resignation from the Jackson Public School Board of Education and her removal from the racial equity committee. Thank you for your time.
See if I can flip back. There is a foul spirit hanging...
Your name, sir?
My name's William Hastings. I live in the city of Jackson. There is a foul spirit hanging over our civic and public life in Jackson County, Michigan. In December, city of Jackson and JPS employee Keisha Hamilton posted a series of bitterly racist social media posts and other statements meant to disparage and degrade white people. From quote "whiteness is so evil" to quote "these white women are the stupidest" and many other slurs to boot, she vomited her personal hatred onto the majority of the residents of Jackson County. What's worse, she has been aided and abetted by local officials who refuse to condemn her 180 proof racial hatred. Make no mistake, Keisha has attained a public profile and media presence greater than every elected official in Jackson County combined, yourselves included, as well as our new state senator and state representative. Truly, she is now the public face and public voice of JPS, the city of Jackson, and the county itself. One social media post alone critically highlighting Ms. Hamilton's statements has received 1.2 million views and 6,000 retweets to date. This public body, this commission, did not hesitate to condemn Steve Rand in 2018, noting quote "the Jackson County Board of Commissioners is committed to the spirit and letter of all civil rights laws, both state and federal, and has adopted policies that assure that the civil rights of all citizens of this county are protected." Well, I'm a citizen of Jackson County, and I'm asking for my civil rights to be protected tonight. You also stated at the time that the Jackson County Board of Commissioners has a zero tolerance policy regarding conduct which violates or jeopardizes the civil rights of the citizens and employees of Jackson County. My question to you is, are these statements valid and meaningful? If they were truthful in 2018, they must surely be equally truthful tonight. Keisha is not a county employee, but given the public scope of her antics, which have been covered in the New York Post, UK Daily Mail, Fox News, and elsewhere, these comments are now the county's business. It is my expectation that this board can pass a simple resolution condemning these statements in the spirit of its statement, which described Sheriff Rand's comments as quote "absolutely abhorrent and representing conduct that is repugnant to Jackson County", and also condemning quote "the contemptible speech and conduct alleged in the lawsuit against him." The zero tolerance for hate speech that you cited in 2018
Second, sir.
demands zero tolerance today. Thank you to the commissioners who are already leading both publicly and privately on this issue.
Hi, my name is Brendan Orr. I live in Sandstone Township. So I come to you with a little bit different perspective than some of my colleagues. While you all celebrated Christmas, I celebrated Hanukkah. I am a devout Jew. I also am a Christian, so we celebrate Christmas as well. But I had the rare pleasure this year of having both my in-laws and my great-grandparents here. And as I listened to the stories of my great-grandparents, who survived the Holocaust, two of which were in concentration camps, and as they told the stories of the Yellow Stars and all of those things, and my heart broke, and I couldn't fathom that we would ever be in that kind of a situation. And then I got on social media and learned that somebody of the county, I mean, of the city school district, is speaking of the evilness of a whole group of people. And I couldn't help but hear the echo chamber of my in-laws as they talked about this type of rhetoric is what led to people willfully participating in the annihilation of 6.6 million Jews. I understand that the county commission does not have direct authority over Keisha Hamilton, but there has to be something that you can do. I'm not sure what it is, but there has to be something. The city of Jackson is in the county of Jackson. I don't live in the city of Jackson, but my kids are here. My kids play here. And this is the rhetoric that led to horrible history that Germany would love to admit never happened, right? They would love to deny it. There are a lot of people that say if people would have stood up and done the right thing, they would have never gotten there. Who knows? That's second guessing. We can never be certain. But what I do know is that we have to take a stand against it. It's not just enough for us to get up and say this is unacceptable. We've shown up to JPS. We've shown up. They're not listening. It's got to be squashed, and I'm not sure how to do that, but I'm asking for you all to put your collective brains together and come up with something. Something's got to be done. Thank you.
My name is Marcy Jankovic. I live in Summit Precinct 3, which happens to be in the Jackson Public School District. And that's why I'm coming to you as my county representatives, because I don't live in the city. I live in Summit Township, and you are who represent me. Now, I know I can vote for a school board member, but this woman has set the tone for the impression of our community. I have gone to places in Lansing and so forth to find out I'm from Jackson when we're talking in political circles. Oh gee, what a shame. It's very racist there. We need to speak out as a group. We need for you to censure her so that your peers, especially on the county commission and in the school district, can understand that our community as a whole does not tolerate this kind of racism, no matter what your color is. If you can do that for Sheriff Rand with his misogyny and ridiculous racist remarks, you can do it with Keisha. Sheriff Rand was certainly a county employee, but he wasn't under your direct control. That's why he stayed till he could collect his pension. I thank you for doing what you did with Sheriff Rand, and I ask you to do the same with Keisha Hamilton.
Peter Bournemouth, 142 West Pearl Street. I'll speak to these comments. I want to say Sheriff Rand made those comments at an office meeting, at a meeting of personnel in the sheriff's department. So this was directly related to his employment. He was also the head of the entire sheriff's department. So whatever his attitudes were, would filter down to other people. And there was certainly a reason to find those comments of Sheriff Rand to be concerning. Keisha Hamilton made these comments on her own personal Facebook posts or Twitter posts. And that is a First Amendment right. Even if they are insulting or if they are, you know, make people feel concerned, make people feel uncomfortable, they are not official statements of the Jackson Public School Board. They are individual statements. And the Supreme Court actually has a case before it right now that will help determine whether or not those kind of comments are something that can even be dealt with. So I want to say that. I also want to say that everybody in this room ought to think about what it would have been like to be a black woman during slavery times. A black woman might have come home from working in the fields that day, and if she had a child who was 14 or 15, that child might have been sold. That daughter might have been sold while she was at work. She might never have seen her child again in her lifetime. I want people to consider what Christian whiteness did in this country and understand how a woman like Keisha Hamilton might make those statements that she made. I feel like it's very important, specifically when there are people like down in the state of Florida who want to eliminate the teaching of U.S. history, who want to eliminate the teaching of what actually, factually happened in this country and want to perpetuate this myth of white Christian exceptionalism. And these same people that down there are calling for the removal of black history, that are calling for the removal of AP classes, that are calling for the governor to have the right
Twenty seconds, sir.
to change universities and university curriculums and to put, you know, Christian teaching in there instead of evolution and climate change. I just want to say, those are the same people down here, and those are the same people right here.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Gina Hastings from Jackson. I'm here tonight to talk about Jackson County. Jackson County has 13 school districts. The largest is JPS, which has about 4,400 students. There are hundreds of teachers, staff, and administrators. When Keisha Hamilton, JPS board member, made her outrageous public statements such as "whiteness is so evil," "white women are the stupidest", and that she would rather no whites existed on the planet, yes, you can look that tweet up, she hurt a lot of people. She also hurt the reputation of the city and the county. Do a simple news search on this story, which gained national and even international attention, and you'll notice that something is missing. What is missing? It's a firm condemnation of her statements by anyone in the county. Officials should know that when they decide not to speak, they are still communicating. They are silent, but that silence registers as approval. Saying nothing is actually saying that you agree with Ms. Hamilton. I stood up at the last JPS board meeting. My full name and image was in countless news articles and videos. Now it's time for you and all the others here to be brave and speak out, to say that you do not approve these statements, that they don't align with the values of the county commissioners. And please don't squabble about the fact that this is the county and she works for the city. Believe me, that is not a good look for this body. Racist statements are wrong, and you all have a zero tolerance policy. At least, that's what I've heard. So be brave, get your convictions on public record. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is James Anthony Minnick. I'm from Columbia Township. I may not agree with the words that anyone says, but I will defend to my death the right for anyone to say anything they want to say.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees. We've arrived at approval of the minutes of the January 17th, 2023 meeting.
Support.
Have a motion in support. Entertain any corrections? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Arrived at the consent agenda. Entertained a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion in support. Any items for removal for discussion later? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you post the vote?
It is now posted. Motion passes.
Thank you. Standing Committee, Public Safety and Transportation, chaired by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy, Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have no business.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee, General Government, chaired by County Commissioner Phil Duckham, Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. General Government also has no business tonight.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee, Human Services, chaired by Commissioner Earl Polesky, Commissioner Polesky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item. There is a Human Services Board appointment for the Department on Aging Advisory Committee. It's a public seat. Its term expires December of 2023. It is currently vacant, and we have, regrettably, no applicants, therefore. And so unless there are motions from the floor, Mr. Chair, we have nothing to act upon tonight.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none. We'll carry that forward to be posted next month, Commissioner Polesky.
That concludes business, sir.
Thank you, sir. We've arrived at item 16, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the Board of Commissioners? Is there any new business to come before the Board of Commissioners? Arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. Public comment guideline, each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity. It may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Public comment is open for two minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Way, Summit Township, and I'm the chair of the County Parks Board. And I want to say thank you for approving our contractor for the new pickleball courts. It's been a long time coming. It's been over two years. We've been working on this, fundraising on this. And I'm happy to say, as all you know, that most of it, all but both, a little bit have been covered by donations. So we have a state-of-the-art pickleball complex by July, August. And I got to say, we got a big pat on the back to Kyle Lewis, our parks director. He worked, him and his staff worked very hard on this. Kathy Lincoln, who's also in the crowd, she headed up the private fundraising and raised $300,000 for it. But it's going to be a good thing, and I think it's something that everybody can be proud of and let us play some pickleball.
Good evening, Commissioners. Gary Shutey, Jackson County Sheriff. Gentlemen, I just wanted to come up here and speak a little bit about Hank Zavislak. I know you're all aware, because I sent you an email about Hank, but I wanted to make sure everybody in this room knew who he was. Hank Zavislak was the Jackson County Sheriff for 22 years, and he was a friend of mine, a mentor, and just a fantastic guy. He unfortunately passed away on February 16th. And I think it's important that you recognize, we recognize, the contributions that that man had in this county. He was the only person to occupy the county sheriff's position and the county prosecutor's position in all of Michigan. He held both of those offices. 22 years as the Jackson County Sheriff. The longest-serving Jackson County Sheriff in history. 10 years as county prosecutor. And he was just a great guy. He encouraged me to go to law school. He sat down and mentored me and counseled me. And he said, you know, the only thing I was never able to get you to do, Gary, was put you in Brown. And here I am today. I spoke with him a short time before the election. I spoke with him a short time before the election, and he said, Gary, you know, I'm going to sit this out. He says, I think I've done my thing when it comes to politics. He says, but you know, if you ever have any questions, if you ever have anything that you need from me, I'm only a phone call away. And he was always there. Fantastic guy. I will truly miss him, and I hope you all have a thought and a prayer for his family. Thank you very much for the time.
Any other public comment?
This time I won't put it in my mouth, sorry. I guess I just wanted to comment to some of the, I guess there was a debate about
Your name again, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Melissa Hiller.
Thank you.
Summit Township. As far as the freedom to speak, of course, I don't think anybody here is against that. It's just the content and the manner that it's delivered, and the influence that it does hold, and the praise that it's getting. But I guess I just really want to say, imagine that the roles were reversed, the races were reversed. I hardly think that would be acceptable, regardless of our freedom to speak. So that's all I wanted to say.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. We've arrived at Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Poleski?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm glad the, I'm glad the sheriff mentioned Hank Zabislak. I have it on my list of things to comment upon tonight. My dad was teaching firearms when Hank was running the, the police academy at Jackson College, and that was a few days ago. And Dad always had a good respect for Hank, and as did I, and I hope he rests well. Thinking also about the earthquake in Turkey and Syria, where tens of thousands of people have been killed. That's a, that's a pretty awful thing, and, and we should all bear that in mind, as well as the more man-made disaster at MSU here of last week. Keep, keep thinking of all those things as you, as you go about your business. I will also, I suppose, address the issue of, of whether to censor, censure a sitting member of the Jackson Public School Board. That's sure, certainly appealing, but I think the greater good will be achieved by working very hard, as hard as all of you have worked thus far, to defeat candidates that you find not to be acceptable on your school board. It's time, you'll have to hustle, and you'll have to put up candidates that can be elected, but that's the remedy to can, to people who are in office that you don't care to be in office. Lastly, we have heard at Human Services about some dental work that's been done by our county to find kids who have poor dental hygiene, poor dental health, and our Health Department has been working with the Center for Family Health and others to achieve some better dental care. I was at the dentist today and talked to Dr. Rutledge, shot on Spring Harbor Road, who is conducting her own free dental clinic next Tuesday, Tuesday, the 28th, from 7:00 a.m. until 3:30 at her office on Spring Harbor Road, for those children who do not have dental insurance and who are not currently her patients, which would probably be a number of folks that would need the, this dental care. So I'm really thankful to Dr. Rutledge for doing that, and appreciate, appreciate her actions. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to go on and on.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Baer.
I like our freedom of speech, but even our freedom of speech is limited, and starting a riot by your speech is not appropriate. Abuse of language is not appropriate. Language sometimes is even by law considered assault. I have the right to wave my hand, but my right to wave my hand stops short of my neighbor's nose. So we can't just do whatever we want. And Steve Rand's words were viewed to be inappropriate, repugnant, unacceptable, and I view Keisha Hamilton's words and her texts as unacceptable, repugnant, divisive. So if this Jackson County Board of Commissioners saw fit to take action against Rand, it should also find it acceptable to take action against Hamilton.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. Just in light of the climate of the day, not just in the city, the county, but across the country, I'm just reminded of the words of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., where he stated, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first intent was to, was to sit this one out and not engage in the, in the, but, but I have to, because what I'm hearing is something that I think people need to be aware of. The very strong, I hear people come in with very, very strong opinions. I hear people quote what Ms. Hamilton said. It's not my job to justify what Keisha said on her own tweet that says, these views are my own and not that of any other organization or anything that she represents. But one of the things that I'm hearing, the first thing I always hear people refer to is she said that whiteness is evil. And then I've seen some people take some Merriam-Webster's approaches to what whiteness is. Let me explain to you what whiteness is, so you'll understand. The circle of hermeneutics tells us, first of all, that all understanding is context-dependent. Unfortunately, in a tweet, there's not enough context to understand what's being said. Whiteness is a fictional social construct that was created to preserve power, wealth, and privilege. That invention, that creation, that historical danger, dangerous ideology is what has us here today. That's what has us here today. That construct itself that created and led to racism and slavery is evil. That is evil, not white people, not white women. That social construct is evil. Now, there was not enough context there for you to understand that, and I grasp that. So I'm not here to justify or, or to condemn a person's free speech. What I'm telling you is read, get an understanding for what you are reading. Understand it. Now, me, if I, I speak about diversity, equity, and inclusion in a lot of different places. If I go to any one of those places, and my lead to that conversation is whiteness is evil, I'm going to lose a lot of my audience, because they're going to think I'm just referring to white people and not the social construct to lead to some of the hate and animosity that we have here today. My advice to this board is to do as you've done in the past. I didn't hear this board, I didn't see this group of people show up when George Floyd was murdered and killed in Minnesota. I didn't see a group of people show up like this when Ahmaud Arbery was killed jogging down the street. I didn't even see a group of people like this show up for Sheriff's Rand situation. Our board did, we did issue a statement regarding his conduct. Nothing about the racism that was said in his conduct. Nothing at all. So my suggestion is simple. Let's work on how we should have these type of conversations and address the real issues that we have at hand. Commissioner Poleski just referred to what happened in Michigan State. We have real-life crises around the world that we need to face, but instead, we're focused on a tweet out of context, that we, we should be really looking at real issues. I do appreciate every one of you that came here tonight, and I would love to spend time with any one of you to have some conversations about what took place. But understand the context that this is in. Understand the construct that created whiteness, not white people. The, the, the tweet said, "whiteness." It said, "it is perfidious." Not, "they are perfidious." It is perfidious. Again, not to justify it, but just so you understand the context and what is evil before we make a hasty judgment. Thank you, Mr.
Commissioner Duckham, and then Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Willis, for that comment. People here wish the county would censor Ms. Hamilton, but it's out of the scope of what we do. It's, the sheriff was a county employee. She is not, kind of just, just over the line, where we really don't have any authority, and all it will do is create a continuing debate on her comments. Yes, they were wrong. They came across wrong. I have apologized to people for our forefathers condoning slavery. Yet I do, I wasn't there and I didn't do it, but I apologized for, to the, the people, the, we're members of slave families. I would hope that maybe Ms. Hamilton would come forward and, on her own, public comment, and say, without a context, "I'm sorry." Come right up to that podium and apologize to the people in Jackson County, and put it to bed, and move forward. Because it doesn't, it's just festering right now, and it's not getting any better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate my fellow colleagues' comments as well. Also, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Williams back. I know you were having some health issues, and it's great to see you. In regards to this, I feel I need to speak out. I can't speak for the whole board, but I can certainly speak for myself. Recently, a lot of you have, or maybe not you, but members of the public have sent emails, some spoke with me personally, and are rightfully so extremely upset about Keisha Hamilton's racist remarks on social media. While our First Amendment right to free speech is vital in this country, Ms. Hamilton is a sitting Jackson Public School Board member, the Chair of the City of Jackson's Racial Equity Commission, and is also a racial equity consultant for Diverse Minds Consulting LLC. Holding any of those positions comes with great responsibility, just like being a county commissioner does. The type of rhetoric she used while being in these positions of power is dangerous, as her remarks do not move towards racial unity and equality, but rather press towards racial divisiveness and anger. I'm not interested in going back to the times of segregation and hate. I'm interested in continuing to move forward towards unity, equality, and love. Among Keisha Hamilton's remarks are, and I quote, "whiteness is so evil, it manipulates," then says, "I won't apologize for my dishonesty and trauma-inducing practices," and thinks you should applaud it for being honest about its ability to manipulate and be dishonest. In response to an online poster speaking about hunting, "the last thing you have to worry about is an animal." Though that could be a very real threat, more dangerous are any white folks you may see on the trail. Be safe. Another quote from Ms. Hamilton, "these white women are the stupidest." Another quote, "generally, white people don't care, most of them. It's tough working, living among them." Sigh. Another quote, "whiteness is synonymous with racist." I believe people make mistakes, and people can right their mistakes. This, however, isn't one simple slip of tongue, and worse, there's no remorse on her part. The words aren't taken out of context, and these words certainly do not display metaphoric symbolism, as some naive people have suggested. This is a troublesome pattern, and these are clear-cut statements indicating how Ms. Hamilton feels about white people, and the bitterness that she holds in her heart towards them. So let's call it for what it is. It is racist, divisive rhetoric that needs to be condemned. To date, Ms. Hamilton has not apologized and has proudly stated in public that she will not. To me, I don't know how a responsible city government or school board member can allow someone to continue in their current capacity openly making statements like that and then refusing to apologize while attempting to spin the narrative, placing herself in the role of a victim. Beyond the remarks and refusal to apologize, Ms. Hamilton also has made false claims about far-right fringe groups, such as the Proud Boys distributing flyers on JPS campus, organizing, and threatening to come to a JPS school board meeting. The meeting was held, and there were no far-right, right fringe groups there. There were, however, quite a few angry activists supporting her there, mainly from out of town, that she had clearly riled up with, with a false narrative. They screamed, jeered, heckled, and intimidated, and attempted to intimidate those citizens who dared to stand and speak out against Ms. Hamilton's racist social media remarks. I call on Jackson Public School's school board and security staff to search their camera footage to see who actually did distribute the alleged Proud Boys flyers on their campus. If that actually did occur, it would seem that some type of investigation should be done, and the individuals responsible would be issued trespass orders if warranted. So truly, I, I call on JPS to do that. Lastly, prior to this, she made allegations about the school district superintendent bullying and harassing her at a January board meeting. The board had an independent investigation done at a substantial cost to Jackson Public Schools that resulted in finding that her claims were baseless, lacking any credit, any kind of credible merit. This type of dishonesty, coupled with the constant need to be the aggressor in situations, and then portray herself as the victim, are clear-cut signs of narcissism. There is nothing inclusive, nothing equitable about this, about this type of behavior. It seeds hate and anger while stoking the flames of racial division and a toxic environment. I personally condemn Ms. Hamilton's hateful rhetoric and divisive actions. I call on my colleagues on this commission to do the same, the leaders of JPS, as well as Jackson City's Council to do the same. Furthermore, I call on the Jackson City Council and the JPS School Board to act appropriately in regards to the boards she currently serves on by formally requesting an apology for her racist comments or a resignation. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none. We have no closed session this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion in support. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed?